Okay, it is six forty Tuesday, July twentieth. I'd like to call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting scheduled for tonight in the selectance meeting room. The first order of business tonight is to approve the minutes for June eighteenth. We got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, moves right into our first and only case this evening. We have case number two point, sorry, two zero two four point zero seven point two three A. Case of Jacqueline Correa Gonzalez of ten A Wood Road petitioning the board to be able to operate her bouncing house business in a residential zone. This request is being made under the provisions of section three, three, one, A. Do we have a representative?
Yes.
Audience yes?
Um, here it says it's to operate my bounce house business. In factuality, I don't want to operate my business there. I just want to be able to clean and dry out my inflatables in the area. Um, I don't want to operate there. I have a office in New Bedford for my business that I actually operate from. But, um, yes, um...
You would be operating a portion of your business bringing it there to dry them out?
Yeah, to dry them out, yes. I just, I didn't, um, not, no customers involved or, but yes. Um, I just, I want the permission to dry them three days a week from the, um, from the times of seven to seven, the noise quidditch to a cushion it. Um, I have a patch area that, um, that's in front of the yard that separates me and the one neighbor that I do have that will hear or see the inflatables. There's a large wooden, um, wooden area about a hundred and fifty feet between us that I can, you know, inflate these bounce houses that they don't need to see or even hear them, which is what I've been doing the past few weeks with the, um, complying with, I was able to inflate them one time every three days for one hour to function as I could, you know, to the capability that I could right now, which is really difficult to do. Um, but I have been doing that and it's been out of the way. Um, I don't know if that's been working for, for my neighbors, but it is something that I've taken a lot of time to say that I can, because where it was before, it wasn't the way, it wasn't individual and they could hear it. I do have a video so you can hear what the, what the, um, what the blow would sound like as well. Although with the inflatable attached would be muffled, so it's a little less. But here I have it where it's open in the air, so it's a little bit louder. But you can hear, um, what it would kind of sound like as well if they were, when their blowers are being used as well. But that's pretty much, um...
Okay, I'm going to, I should have started right off with this, but I'm going to give you the opportunity. Um, just so you know, tonight, there's only four members here. We normally operate as a five-member board. You're here for a special permit, special re, special re, ah, sorry, a special permit requires four yeses. Um, you'd need a unanimous vote tonight. If you prefer, you can ask us to postpone until we have a five-member board at the next meeting. Or you can ask us to continue this evening, but I want it to be your, your choice. Just so you know, you do need four out of five. Um, you'll meet four out of five next week anyway, but maybe the one person makes a difference. I can't, um, you know, but I want you to have that opportunity to ask us to bring this back up next meeting or ask us to move forward.
Um, I think I would like to postpone, just, just so I...
Um, just so you know, I mean, you, you, we could talk about it and then you can make a decision. You don't have, she doesn't have to make that decision right now, does she? Well, I'd like to, I'd like to get some more information tonight while we're here.
That'd be great, but the issue is if she doesn't want us to proceed as a four-member board, we can't discuss it because we need the other member to hear all the facts and all the abutters and, and her, all her stuff. So if we proceed, we need, we need, you know, we'll vote on it tonight. But if you want to ask for continuance, which again, I don't want to, against what you're saying, but yeah, we can't add after the fact. So we either continue it or we, um, move forward, but we can't stop once we...
Can I please ask a question?
It's your choice, it's your choice.
Um, how long would I wait for the next meeting?
I'm sorry?
How, I'm so sorry, how long would I wait for the next meeting?
The next meeting is August twenty-seventh. It's a full month.
That's a month, yeah.
We only have a meeting once a month.
Is it fish ramen?
Well, okay, you still, you still need four, so I mean, it's...
Yeah, I, I understand, I...
Question? I thought the four members was when it was a variance. I always thought that the special permit was three, was simple majority, and I'm just offering that to you.
I'm going to take his word for it because he does it day to day. I thought, I thought it was the opposite, but he's probably right, sitting in the chair. Well, you probably need three out of five, so you'd need three out of four.
Okay.
Simple majority of the five.
Then I'd like to proceed.
Okay. All right, so we've heard what she's asking for. Um, as always, we're going to ask for, about his opinion. I, we have the building inspector here, so I'm going to allow him to, uh, we have a, a letter from him, but that was from when, uh...
I have a few questions, Mr. Chairman, when you're, when you're ready.
Go ahead.
Um, so I have three questions, I worked on, just listening to the intro. How long have you been in business?
Um, this would be my third full season.
Your full season, and where is your business located elsewhere?
Um, New Bedford.
Where exactly, I was curious.
Um, on Bluefield Street is where I'm running my business, but I had a storage unit out there.
So you don't have the room there to do what you're trying to do with, with...
Right, um, the way that I did, there was a lot of, like, there was a lot of accommodating sacrifices that I had to make the way that I was doing it before. There's way, you know, there was ways to do it, but it was, it was a lot of labor. You know, the way that I would be able to do it this way would save my family so much on labor and time, um, which is why I moved to the location that I was at.
Okay.
Um, my landlord, she, she knew exactly, you know, me going there, what, what it was for me, the location and the space, um, yeah.
Okay, my final question is, how many of these bouncy's do you own?
I, I did own eight, but I sold them when August was happening. I needed to buy myself some time and...
So how many do you have now?
I have four.
Okay, that's it, that's it.
What else were you looking for?
Um, I believe the noise quidditch of, of cushion it is seven to seven, so I figured that that would have been fair. Not that I would ever really use from seven to seven, um, because I don't like peak sun hours. It's a lot of stress on us, you know, but, um, but I, I just figured that that's what I would say because that was just a...
Monday through Friday?
I would do three days a week, you know, to just lessen whatever, to accommodate, you know. I would prefer five days a week, but I would absolutely do three days a week, but it would be flexible with the weather because if it's raining, I can't, you know, which, I mean, putting it up for just one hour puts such a strain on what I was doing as a business because now I, I have such limited time, I can only put up one, you know, it was, it's been quite challenging.
So typically, how long does it take to, to dry one hour, or how long does it run?
You know, if I'm being comfortable, if I, if I can put up two, you know, I would be up there for two hours, you know, in my, in my nice, you know, flow of work and not having to be hustle, you know?
And you, do you want to speak?
Mr. Chairman and board members, um, this kind of came in under the radar. Um, and I was, I had received a complaint from an abutter and the concern was the amount of vehicle traffic at all hours of the night and day. The noise of the bouncy house or bounce house times two, three, four, or more all at once. And they did not have a business certificate, so we tried to address that. When we, when I went online to look at the business description, uh, it was there one day and then it was removed once, you know, there was a complaint made. But it, it's challenging and what I did, just so that you're all aware of it, is this started roughly three, four months ago, maybe more. Uh, excuse me, maybe three months ago. And what I tried to do is, um, Jacqueline had missed the filing deadline for June, so then it was going to be this month in tonight's meeting. So what I did is I contacted the abutter that was concerned over the project, spoke with both the husband and wife. Um, and what I tried to do was to try to accommodate Jacqueline and what I asked the, the abutters who are the Litchfields and they're here tonight, um, would every fourth day for an hour at a time be acceptable to them? So I wanted this five days a week, six days, six days a week not to be on the table at that time until they came before you. Um, and from that day to this day, there's been no complaints, but the Litchfields are here tonight. Um, and to my knowledge, Jacqueline has stayed with that, you know, on every four days, she'd open it up, have it run for an hour and hopefully dry out, uh, the bounce house. So there are a lot of kind of moving parts in this particular case and it's a, you know, dead-end street, very dense part of town, if you will, um, and, you know, both parties are here tonight to try to make their case.
Now, when we were talking about vehicle traffic, how many vehicles?
Can I speak on that, please? Um, there was a police report made on me. Um, I had a customer go to, I, I tried to do a few experimentals. Where I was at, I wasn't able to, like I had said, there was a lot of sacrificing that I had to do where I, the way I was doing it before. Um, this location would allow me some free will, to my knowledge at the time. So when I had first started it, I was doing experimentals. Do I have to, you know, you know, do as much labor? Can I leave it up overnight? Can I, this was experimental, but I did not know that I was going to be disrupting anybody. I'm a city girl, you know, that the, I don't, and that's the truth. I don't think that I was, you know, and now that I know where I'm at, I'm learning very fast.
Put your question up.
Okay, um, I am more than willing to accommodate. I mean, I come from New Bedford, I do so many things for my city, for the schools. Like if you look me up, you will know. Now, the complaints that were made for me, that forty-six cars, I believe the police report was said. I had a customer go to my neighbor's house on accident where there was a, a incident that happened between a customer, an elderly man, Hispanic elderly man, and my neighbor and, um, and the cops were called. My neighbor was startled, my, my customer was startled by my neighbor.
Did you say forty-six?
Yes, he was about, an older, uh, older man. Oh, yeah, they said that there was forty-six vehicles that were, came from my...
That's like the whole, the whole lane.
Yes, I know, and so then it was said that there was a loud vehicle that was trafficking to my house, a black vehicle with a loud exhaust playing loud music. Now, this was posed to be a neighbor that, that was down on Mecca's Road. Um, I actually know that that was her son's friend, but it was, it was being brought to, that it was me. I actually offered and gave my, um, my landlord my cameras, access to all my cameras so she can look and see who was in my house the day, and I only had one car coming in and out of my vehicle. It was a man that I was dating, um, and that was it. And, um, there was no one else that came to my house. I've had a customer, I explored that option, but then soon realized I didn't even want, people don't know where I live. So I don't even want, honestly, I don't even want that option, even if it was for me. Um, it's, majority of the time, it's just me and my daughters who live at, in my home. It's just me and an eleven-year-old and a three-year-old, majority of the time. Um, but, so a lot of those accusations were not accurate. Um, and I, and it was proved to say that, and I did go to the police station and I offered to get my cameras and to do what they do with my location because they, I didn't move to a cushion it for any of that, you know. I, I moved there just not that...
Move over to the abutters if you don't mind and, uh, that's, that's not that... Who, no, whoever wants to be first, I, everybody out there, I assume you're either an abutter or want to speak for or against this and, uh, one of their time, I'd like to, I'd like to come up and give you a, uh...
Hello?
If you, if, um, I'm sorry, I should have said first, but if you just state your name and address so that, uh, we have it for the record.
Yeah, I'm Danielle Litchfield, Ten Wood Road, and this is my fiancee Zach Baden. Um, we also own the property at Zero Lake Mont, and I just mentioned that because we still see the bounce houses when we go to our second property. But we've been a cushion it residence for five years and we love the peace and beauty this town provides. Um, I understand and sympathize with Ms. Korea's situation and I also understand the need to provide for a family and I'm not here to hurt anybody, but it is my responsibility as a homeowner to protect and advocate for my family and our property. And this is the biggest investment I'll ever make. So that being said, we are strongly opposed to the operation of, um, of the business at ten A. And just to provide you some context, um, which I'm sure you've seen if you've gone down it, but Wood Road is a quiet, dead-end dirt road on a heavily wooded area. Our home at ten, along with the property, under consideration, ten A, are the only two homes on Wood Road. They are separate structures, but they were once one property, so because of the close proximity, we can see and hear everything going on next door as if it was our own backyard because it essentially is. Um, I know there are other abutters here, but I did want to point out that we are the only abutter in close proximity. We're the only two houses on the street, us and ten A. Um, Ms. Korea has been operating her business in the residential zones since she became a tenant at ten A in December of last year. Starting in April, she began running three bounce houses consecutively for twenty-four hours a day for nearly five weeks, one of which was only fifty feet from my back door. The noise, vibration, and exhaust from the bounce house, from the bounce houses are obnoxious. Um, we've had continuous issues with Ms. Korea providing her customers with our address instead of ten A starting immediately after her tenancy began. We've had multiple trespassing complaints regarding her associates as well as her customers, some of which involve the police, as she mentioned. I would like to point out that our one-lane dirt road cannot handle a huge influx of traffic, which is often seen late at night, um, in regards to the forty-six cars. That's not talking about the cars that are there, but the cars that we see continuously coming in and out at night.
I don't think it was forty-six that was said, but there was, there's quite a bit considering it's a dirt road.
Yeah, um, and the dust kicked up from the road is pretty extreme. The excessive traffic is not helping that. We have barely thirty feet of frontage between one of our bedroom windows and the road and the dust and constant traffic is a nuisance. The road was recently graded by the DPW and needed two potholes filled recently already. I feel this puts a direct burden on the town. It also appears to us that this business has not been operating responsibly or legally, at least in this town. It is operating in direct opposition of the town bylaws, which state that a customary home occupation in the RA zone may not create excessive traffic, noise, unsightlyness, or vibration. It may not involve any exterior display of goods, tools, materials, or equipment, all of which is currently happening. There's also a large storage container with bounce houses and large piles of trash to and about the property. Um, it's my belief that Ms. Korea has not been able to satisfy the requirements for a special permit by the way that, that it's written, as her business would not substantially benefit the convenience and welfare of the community, is not in harmony with the intent of the bylaws, and is an added burden to the town. It is also detrimental to our property value, the wildlife, and our peace, privacy, and security. It's our opinion that Ms. Korea has shown an egregious disregard for consideration of other residents as well as the bylaws of the town. Despite multiple enforcements, she continued to operate businesses as usual. I feel that the ZBAs issuance of a special permit, even with stipulations, would be opening a can of worms. Again, typically, I don't care what other people do on their own property, provided that it doesn't affect us. However, the tenancy next door has been nothing short of a nightmare for us. The disruption of our peace has been incredibly stressful for our family. We moved here for the quiet and did not choose to live next door to a twenty-four-seven bounce house operation that sounds like we live in an airport. I'm home all day, um, we used to be able to hear a pin drop, and my fiancee has worked tirelessly over the past five years to provide us with a beautiful and safe property, which we've now lost the peaceful enjoyment of. Our home used to be our sanctuary and is now being intruded upon by noise and strangers all hours of the day and night, both on my property and on the street. We are very grateful that there are town bylaws to prevent these sorts of disturbances from occurring. We're asking Chairman Brown and respected members of the board that the bylaws be affirmed and abide, abided by today. We respectfully ask that the board uphold the decision to disallow this to continue. Wood Road is not an appropriate location to run a business. We would be grateful for your support in providing us back our peace, quiet, privacy, safety, and value of our home. We're thankful for your time and consideration.
Thank you. My, my one question I had most of the way through, but I think you answered it in the end, is, um, I know you, you, uh, Andy asked you to kind of let a little bit of something slide for the last month waiting for this day, even with the stipulations, you, you're not happy with it at any time around?
I, no.
I, I, I heard that, I just wanted to reiterate what I heard is that, under any conditions, it's, it's, it's not for you.
Yes, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. Um, I know, I haven't been down there in a while, I did not go down there because I've been down there a million times from riding that dirt bike, these guys grew up right next door. Um, how many houses are on Wood Road, Wood Road now?
Two, there's two.
The whole road, dirt road, it's only two?
Well, it transitioned to Mecca.
Right.
And you got all the houses down Mecca.
Right, so how many use that alley, about, you've been down there? How many houses total?
Gary would probably be...
There's nine of us down there.
About nine? Yeah, I'm just curious on the total, I was just going by...
That's coming from Marshall.
That's the last one.
Yeah.
Just nine of us down there.
Yeah.
But not all of them are fills, uh, like Saint Tousy says, some cottages, but they're in it now, you know. They've, it's down there and, uh, what you call it, uh, Phil was going to camp and down there visiting it this week.
I'm just curious on how much typical traffic is besides anybody that's put down there.
We know almost every single car that goes by, there are a handful of them.
So when you're talking about dust and everything?
The Colin question that they're talking about making the noise, James Gamache's son graduated, so they had a party for him. So some of the cars came in Charlie and some came in Wood Road. Because, uh, like, it was like midnight or one o'clock, one of them went out and I was like, oh, man, I hope this is a one-off and not going to be a, you know...
Yeah, yeah.
And to my knowledge, we didn't complain about one specific vehicle, so that very well could be there was a loud car. I don't, sure, but...
Okay, another, another question, do you own a rent where you guys are at?
I own it.
You own it, so you've been there about five years?
Yes.
You're not going anywhere?
No, for life, totally.
And, and I know you mentioned it, I just wanted to, so there was, there's no circumstance where she said, I, if you gave me one hour, two days a week, that's, you're not for that?
Uh, no.
Your opinion of what you want, okay. I just want to know where you're coming from, okay?
Any other abutters?
Just me? We all know you, Gary, but, but, but my secretary who's not here this evening, so she could get everybody in the minutes properly. Gary Walker, seventy-four Mecca Way, and I own a big truck on the way down there, so I'm around ten A. The only issue I had with ten A was when they first brought the Conex blocks in. It was real close to Caribbean Trail, so when I was going to plow snow, it was going to make a little difficult. So I said something to our landlord and she moved the Conex blocks far enough away from me and I'm fine. As far as the bouncy houses, they don't bother me, but again, I'm down the other end. And is, uh, I knew there was an altercation with him getting trespassing in the driveway because it was a day I was bringing them alone from, uh, the personal home. And so it kind of jacked us all up trying to get in for a minute. So, uh, I was under the understanding was somebody that wanted to come down and see the bouncy house. So I thought a possible solution for her would be to put the bouncy houses online and then pick them when you want and you get it delivered. And if the traffic's an issue, maybe she can deliver it instead of having a customer come pick it up. So the real, really the only solution you guys have is, uh, the noise or whatever. But maybe they can come up with some sort of agreement. I know she's moved the bouncy houses from the backyard to the front, so there's a much more buffer of vegetation between them for where they got it. I'm not opposed to her getting the permit, just you should do the restrictions you need to do to make sure it accommodates both of them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else from the audience?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, now we have an event in front of the board next month, we're just here to observe.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions from the board or do you need any more information?
Yeah, on, on the, uh, the traffic, now, do the people, do you deliver these or do people come and get?
Am I to stand up and say?
Absolutely, absolutely. Can we address anything?
Yeah.
I would like to add that where I live, I do plan on being there for a long time. I don't plan on going anywhere. My, my landlord is very, me and my landlord knows that that is the goal for me and my family. That is something that we're working on together. Um, so I, I do want to say that I do plan on being, uh, a part of a cushion it for a long time, um, whether I am running my bounce house business or not. But, um, also, you know, it was said, I, I believe that a lot of, a lot of like the noise quidditch now or what bothers my neighbors now is just because her mind is already set up. It's not, the noise, if you listen to it and you see the area and you see how much wood is between us, there's no way that she is seeing it, there's no way that she is hearing it. She told me, which I have on video, you're not going to be here for long. Her goal is for me not to be in this, here, you know, so there's nothing that, you know, is, is, I don't think that anything that I would do, you know, but to me, it wouldn't be fair based on what the noise or the visual because there's no noise or visual where it's located. If you take a look at the pictures, you can see there's literally a hundred and fifty feet of, of wood, of trees between where the bounce house is at and where their house is at. And if you look at the video and as I walk away from it, you can see, you can hear it, the, it sounds no louder than a lawnmower, which, you know, that, I hear that all the time, you know, it's no lot of them.
But, but, go back, go back to the traffic now. How do you, how do these, do you deliver them or does people come and pick them up?
I deliver them. Yeah, no, I don't have anyone picking them up. That's why the traffic that was said that was mine, that wasn't my traffic. That was just being said that was my traffic. I think it was just what was going on at the time. Um, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that, that's a, that's an exaggeration. And the, the forty-six cars, that's on the police report, I read that. I didn't make that police report. Um, I didn't make the police report describing the vehicle, you know, that was my neighbor's. So the exaggeration of forty-six car just goes to show you enough of the level of...
No, we, we, we've heard that there, there was other things going on at the same time.
Yeah, but I mean...
That there was a, finding some, the traffic's not really my issue.
Yeah, because I don't, because the, I just want to say the traffic wasn't my traffic. Like I had my landlord go through my cameras and check how many people were even coming into my house.
Obviously, you can come and go from your home as much as you want anyways, regardless of what you're doing. But the, what I want to state, uh, you know, for everybody is, when you ask for a special permit to run a business, it, it totally unfortunately requires the cooperation of your neighbors. And because you started this business prior to their approval and made it a nuisance, um, you, you, it might not have been a problem for the past month because you've only been running one hour a day, but in the past, you had foregoing at all things. And I think the neighbors see that, you know, that can just start reoccurring and reoccurring again. So, um, it, as our building inspector has explained, it's not an allowable use. You can come here and ask permission, but our permission really comes down to, is this something that the whole neighborhood stands behind? And unfortunately, it, it sounds like the, the noise, again, I, I'm not even listening to the traffic in my ear. I, it sounds like that was a, a one-time thing. Maybe you, you had a, a bad customer and they had a party down the street and it all came the same again.
There was a bad, like...
But it does sound like these things running all the time and I had, you know, I rented them, I got four children, so we had parties.
Overnight it, it did, but, you know, during the day, I mean...
But, but if the people are at home during the day, it, it's still something, like you say, it's like a lawnmower, but if your neighbor's cutting his grass four times a week, it is, it, it, it's intrusive. It does devalue their property and this... And this board is supposed to make sure that, that doesn't happen. So, um, I don't know, I, I think I've heard plenty, but is anybody else need any?
Can I just add something, sir? Regarding, um, the delivery of the bounce houses, we have seen numerous times more than ten of customers driving by with bounce houses in the back.
Okay.
So I just wanted to add that.
It's not always a delivery.
No.
Sometimes they pick up.
Correct, chairs, tables and chairs, those types of items as well.
I, if she's talking about several people with bounce houses, I don't, I haven't even, I can show you my, my, I can show you my invoices, I haven't even, I haven't even rented them out like that. I've had one rental a week, like literally, I've only been to just one unit because I haven't been able to clean them.
What do you use to transport?
I have an SUV, they fit right inside me. Yeah. Right now, um, I do have, I do have people who would work for me that have pickup trucks that would work for me. That's, that's the people who work for me, not my customers.
And according to the bylaws, uh, customary home occupation cannot have more than two employees either coming and going from the residence.
I don't have two employees, I only have one.
Okay.
And just to reiterate, the, the customer that, um, wound up on my property when I was doing yard work, um, was given my address. It wasn't, he showed it to the police and then called the police on me and filed a false police report in my own yard.
That's not true, okay.
With a hook number ten, aren't they ten A?
It's Ten A, yes, it's Ten A.
So I can see, like, it's been, it's screwed up.
Yeah, I never give ten, but, you know, it's very, our, our packages, everything gets, which they come onto the property all the time to get their packages.
We're happy to work with this board, I've seen it happen a lot, that we're happy to work and try to get to a common ground. But I think what Bobby's trying to say is that-
It's just my neighbor's just not gonna, I know.
If we can't find common ground, it's gonna be very difficult for us to-
In the future-
Yeah, I'm speaking for myself, but it's-
I mean, my-
We love to, to get everybody-
I do have to state that my business does also offer plenty of other things that I can invest in, that doesn't even have to go towards, um, bounce houses. And I'm, that's why I started selling, cause I am, I have a Plan B and a Plan C. So if I am not going to, uh, apply for a bounce house business, I would like to apply for a rental business, where I can be able to still function and invest in a lot of other things that I can offer my customers without any kind of noise coordinates needed and no kind of chem, you know, any kind of noise or visual for anybody.
That's renting, that's basically running a business out of your house residential. So say you go in the tails and cheers.
Right, but if, if I don't, cause I, I, I'm under the impression that this is more of a noise coordinates and if I don't have, um, customers picking up-
The, the issue is, you're in a residential neighborhood where your neighbors don't wanna see business and-
So the noise is a big thing, obviously, but-
Traffic will be a big thing, uh, deliveries is, uh, again, you're in a very wooded dirt road area. Any business that is gonna be a problem for your neighbors is gonna be a problem. There, there's nothing you can do there other than, like she said, a customary home occupation, which has, you know, there's a list of things that you can do there, but it's, it's very limited. It's limited to the traffic you can have, it's limited to the noise you can make, it's limited by a lot of things. You know, a, a rental business doesn't, I don't think is very well suited for there. And as you said, you have a business location. So if you're in the city running your rental business, that's there. But if you're bringing your stuff and storing it in a residential area, that stuff's coming and going all the time. That's not the type of business that is a customary home occupation. That's the type of business that you have a warehouse for, and, you know.
I mean, it's a small bracket, but I'd say it's a small bracket.
Yeah, it might grow.
Oh, well, then I wouldn't be on my property. It's just, it's a very small business, it's not, I'm not, I don't have like a, a huge-
He's had one wolder.
Yes, I, at that point is why my storefront will come into play, you know? But at the moment, it's a small business, it's not, it's not a big.
We, we wouldn't be here if there wasn't an issue with the type of business. There was complaints from the get-go, which caused you to go after the fact to, to do it properly, but we still have the, the complaint, that's, that's the problem. I don't know, I mean, I don't need any more information, you know? I, I don't think there's anything we're missing, but I do need to, uh, move forward.
Nothing else, you're on the meat, right?
And see you there, continue as well. Enjoy the evening, like, we didn't, there's no compromise at this point, but we did, we've done the best.
I love the compromise, I mean, we, we can't insist on it.
No, I'm just saying, have they- Yeah, I make a motion to move, like I said, which we decided, listen to all the, everybody's, um, position and the aspect of it, what's going on already. I make a motion to deny it.
Yeah, the motion is their second.
I second it.
This is a motion to second for denial of this petition. All in favor? All against?
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
We wish you luck, try and, I mean, we, we love to work with you, it's, we, we gotta stand up for, uh, residents.
I, you know, honestly, I have to say that I will respect that, because I do plan on being here for a very long time. So I appreciate, and I, I, I will-
We hope something works out.
If you was on the other foot and your neighbors were causing you not to enjoy your place.
I'm a city girl, I'm a very humble city girl, so it's, I can't say that, that's, that's back to what, okay.
The only reason I voted against it is I think, we'd love to have you try and work it out.
I would love to see that, but, you know.
Nope, fair enough.
Could I get a signature from you?
Thank you guys, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
We thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
You're gonna take a copy too, but what happens is this will allow you to challenge our decision if you so choose. You will-
Talk to the town for, uh, in, in, uh, a lot of the town.
Absolutely, town for every big investment, she has all the information.
You a doctor? She's not like me.
She's not like I do. And she would, she would tell you how to be a live decision. I do wish to be a live decision, just so you know, you only have twenty days, I believe. But it's, it's right here on it, all the information you need is listed here, okay?
Yeah, and unfortunately, you need to be on a property that's gonna let you do that. So I know it's nice rented down there, it's a nice, quiet, and that's what's, it's a double store, that's what's preventing you from-
So we, three of us grew up down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, yeah.
And so, we turn to, we love it.
Honestly, I just think my neighbors-
What is this for? Yeah, let's say hit the max, that you could, uh-
The decision is-
My, the, my personality, you know, stayed with lots.
Well, hopefully, we're against Nick of Legends.
Oh, okay, now, where's the bar?
I'm not voting any reasons, that's what I'm gonna have to do.
Deserves to write the, have you just done this?
Yeah, that's true, and I, I would say I love that about that.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna find a minute, swap in this.
Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
We're taking a break, I just literally got in the shower. Well, that's what I was telling them. My thing, I live on Austin Avenue and Baker's the last off on the street. When I moved in, he come up, we're still in the meeting.
So I just wanna, we've got everything signed, I just wanna close up the meeting. Do you have any questions in the back, you're just here to observe?
Uh, yes, Chairman, uh, we actually have an event coming up for next month.
Okay, okay.
I make a motion that we close the meeting there.
We have no further business, we have a motion to close.
Second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Alright.